Speaking of Christmas miracle, I don't know.
Busy right now. It's a busy time. No, I don't. Thank goodness. I feel bad for them.
Busy right now. It's a busy time. No, I don't. Thank goodness. I feel bad for them.
Jeff Fisher is one of the few, the only person that you could let him in.
Speaking of Christmas miracle, I don't know.
Busy right now. It's a busy time. No, I don't. Thank goodness. I feel bad for them.
Busy right now. It's a busy time. No, I don't. Thank goodness. I feel bad for them.
Jeff Fisher was one of the few, the only person that you could let him in.
Is it really? No kidding. Okay.
All right. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the North Canton Special City Council Meeting, Monday, December 16th, 7:00 PM. Mark, would you like to lead us in prayer?
Sure.
Thank you.
Lord, thank you for bringing us here this evening, this wonderful place. It's very beautiful outside. Bless those people who decorated this place. Thanks once again for giving us this community and the responsibility and the knowledge to really help move this city forward, help us to listen and to move forward on the necessary things. Bless the workforce that you have given us and all the people around us that give us advice. We pray that we all have a nice break and get back to it first of the year here. We pray that we have a very safe and happy holiday throughout that time for us and all of our constituents and people around us. In God's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. Ben, will you call the roll, please? Member vote?
Here.
Member Fonte?
Here.
Member Peters?
Here.
Member Foltz?
Here.
Member Warren?
Here.
Member Soretta?
Here.
Seven present. All right. Thank you. And for your consideration, need a motion and a second to approve as presented. Organizational meeting minutes, December 2nd, 2019. Special Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes, December 2nd, 2019.
Motion approved as presented.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Before we get to recognition of visitors, just to clear something up, in our last council meeting, we appointed our intern, Ben Young, interim council clerk. I am being told that I didn't use the word interim, which is what we appointed him. I assumed it was, that everyone knew what we were talking about. So anyways, he is our interim. We did appoint him interim. We needed him. Somebody that was going to be at the meetings, attest to the minutes and be able to sign off on them. So that was why we did it post haste. So, okay, at this time, if you wish to address council, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. This is a special council meeting, so I would ask that the comments be directed to the items on the agenda.
You said what's on the agenda, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Larry Tripp, 1127 East Maple, North Canton. Tonight, I would like to expand on my comments from December to night. In all levels of government, elected representatives are expected to show leadership, knowledge and commitment to their positions, probably even more so at the local level with much more personal contact with the citizens. The first thing I see tonight is rarely seen but greatly appreciated, an agenda for a special council meeting, having the same characteristics of a city council meeting. That is, opening prayer, pledge of allegiance and reports by council and administrative personnel. Is this a new trend or an oversight? Then I refer you to item 15, December, January, December and January meeting schedules. As I said last week, this council continues to ignore the voice of its citizens by ending 2019 with nothing and now beginning 2020 with nothing. Along with the summer break and now a winter recess, this city's coffers are lessened by $12,025. Mind you, this does not include missed meetings. Yet, in a public forum, you challenge city representatives for a $15,000 annual salary increase for a city employee who is expected to be present, prepared and knowledgeable. When anyone speaks and writes a letter to the editor about dollar and cents along with government representatives' work ethics, name-calling, the public reacts. Though North Canton may be an aging community and reacts more slowly, they know right from wrong. Believe this year's election reflects that. Two incumbents defeated with ease and the third winning by three votes. To the winner by three votes, not really a vote of confidence. Understand, I am not directing my remarks to each and every member of this council. I know and others know which members display the work ethics, loyalty and charisma necessary to make North Canton government a better place to work and this city to succeed. Again, though, lackness in meetings with so much to be done within this community is not acceptable. Yet, we have a council that appears to undermine the very core values from which this city, this country, was founded, to set and continue precedent of ill-fated core values within council work ethics. And creating examples, creating wrong examples to the community are wrong. Mayor Wilder, Councilman Fonte, both of you are Boy Scouts mentors. All members of the city council and North Canton parents, schoolteachers throughout North Canton. How do you, when using the Boy Scout model, be prepared or in teaching, don't miss school, don't be late for school, study hard or be proactive and success will be more readily available to those that do rather than to those that don't? How do you reply when you are challenged by that one individual? He or she questions, "Why? Why should I try to follow good examples?" Some members of North Canton, council members don't follow that process, yet they get paid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck Osborne, 307 Fairview Street, Southeast, North Canton, Ohio. I am speaking directly regarding proposal orders number 85, a five-year management agreement for Arrowhead Golf Course. Prior to the meeting, I dropped off a spreadsheet to you. What you see highlighted in yellow are figures directly from the budget that's submitted by Steve DePietro of North Canton Golf. As you can see, the six-month season there to the far right, using their own figures, you've already losing over $20,000 for that half-season. Unfortunately, that budget is not comprehensive. It's not complete. It does not include infrastructure costs that have been expended under July. You see $3,762. Those are repairs that Hampton Plumbing had to make at Arrowhead. I'm sure there are more infrastructure costs that have been billed to the city and I've made a request of Mrs. Loretto for those invoices. Also, that budget submitted by Mr. DePietro does not include the management fees of $5,000 a month. So if you incorporate those costs, you're now losing $54,000 a year under this latest agreement which just completed. If you enter into a five-year agreement, there's no doubt in my mind, soon they're going to follow with the demand that we have to make some improvements with the facility. Mr. Diorio has already gone out and expended $25,000 without discussing with council and had an assessment made of the property. And they determined that it needs over $4 million worth of improvements. On top of that, there's like $800,000 in administrative and engineering costs. So you're looking at $5 million that must be expended if you're going to make the improvements that were outlined in that assessment. The debt service on $5 million over 20 years is about $363,000 a year. It's almost $32,000 a month. So you take the losses you're already experiencing. How are you going to come up with $32,000 each month to pay the debt service? You can't tell me that selling some pool revenues, pool passes and some golf memberships are going to bridge this huge, huge financial gap. I urge you to limit this agreement to one year. Mr. Fonte, I have advised you that if you vote on this, I will be taking this to the Ethics Commission. I gave Mr. Soretta privately this advice years ago. It did take him two years to get around to it. But Mr. Soretta found out the hard way. So I urge you, and you guys are also elected members, we should have seven sets of eyes looking at all this. Routinely, I hear up here, well, we trust the city administrator or we trust our law director. I didn't elect you to trust somebody else. If that's the way you're going to perform your position, we don't even need you. We'll just decide amongst ourselves, as citizens, well, we'll trust the mayor, we'll trust the law director. So I'm asking you to do your own due diligence. Think this through. The city cannot continue. Anybody with the intelligence, I guess, to go out and get elected, has the intelligence to dig into this and try to get a grasp on these numbers. So I would highly urge you to dig into this deeper and not pass this for a five-year term. I don't know why it's being pushed. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Melanie?
Melanie J. Roll, 308 Porty Street, Northwest, North Canton. I guess I'm going to address number 13 reports. Some of you have heard my analogy of government and the three-legged stool and how all of those three need to work in tandem to have an successful government and that would be administration, legislative, judicial. If any of those get rusted away on that three-legged stool, things don't work as well. I'm suggesting that the legislative part of that three-legged stool has diminished and I'm hoping that this next term will be better. On the reports, you have clerk of council and director of finance. And I think the director of finance, the interim or fill-in, is not here. If you could, Mr. Peters, articulate, since you're chair of personnel, how you're going to go about searching for a clerk of council and a finance director and probably deputy finance director, since all three of those positions report to council, council president, personnel. I think the process should be open. You should post it, advertise it, get resumes, applications and council should be the ones that do the interview. I'm not sure. I know that's how Ms. Brown was hired. I'm not sure if that process is being used now for the replacement for Ms. Brown. And as far as the clerk, I think you and I spoke last week and I too thought that Mr. Young was hired as full-time. So that was a misconception. So if you would kind of articulate on how the interview process is going to be for those two openings, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Is there anyone else wishing to address council? All right. Seeing none, Melanie, I will address your comments real quick. I wasn't going to make the announcement tonight, but yes, we did post the finance director position. Council has gone through multiple interviews and yes, we have hired that position. Gina Alabac from Lewisville is our new finance director. She will be starting January 13th. As far as council clerk, prior, we had Laura Brown doing the clerk position. And I guess I'll lump these together as it relates to deputy finance director. Once Gina gets in to her position, I would like her to evaluate and make the decision on her own how she wants to run her department and backfill that position. So council will have obviously say on that.
But Jeff, right now, we still have Stacy.
Yeah.
So that was a shared position.
It was, yeah.
Stacy still wants to continue.
Yeah, Stacy is going to continue.
And is doing a really good job with us.
That is correct. And as far as posting the council position, if that's something that Gina does not want to participate in, then yeah, I would assume that we're going to do that. Okay. Okay. Moving on to old business. I may have a motion and a second to read by title only, third reading, ordinance 81-19. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Member Fonte abstains.
An ordinance authorizing the vacation of a 116.5 square foot portion of the existing waterline Eastman on lot 175 in St. Ives, number six allotment in Lake Township and recorded in Platt, volume 59, pages 64 through 65. By the Stark County Platt records, as more fully described in Exhibit A attached here, too.
Thank you. Chairman Soretta?
Yeah, we had this in committee. We've gone through two readings. Unless there's any other questions, I move that we adopt the third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Member Fonte abstains. Okay, on to new business. I may have a motion and a second to read by title only, first reading, ordinance 85-19. So moved.
Second.
I abstain. Yeah. Okay. Sorry about that. Was there a motion? There is a motion. And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Member Soretta abstains. Tim?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton, upon board of control approval, to enter into a management agreement with North Canton Golf LLC and Skyland Pines Incorporated, NCG, for it to manage, under the city's direction, the day-to-day operations of what is commonly known as Arrowhead Golf Club, which includes but is not limited to an 18-hole public golf course, clubhouse, banquet facilities, swimming pool and other existing and future amenities, as more fully described in the management agreement attached here, too, and incorporated herein.
All right. Thank you. Chairwoman Warren?
Okay. We've been talking about this a couple of different times. Pat, is there anything else that you want to say about it tonight or any new information you want to share with us?
No. I got a quick question. Patrick, on the five-year commitment, there's a clause in there that says if the people that are leasing the management agreement, if they have two consecutive years in a row without being able to be solvent, then we can void the agreement. Is that... I just wanted to make sure you clarified that for me real quick.
That is correct.
So it's two consecutive years. So like when I look at what this paper is here, it looks like it's a part year. We're off-season, so of course the numbers are going to be lower. You know, I just wondered, like you got March, April, May, probably I would assume that you would have strong numbers.
Well, first of all, I don't think that you can take with a degree of certainty the numbers that are on the piece of paper that was passed out to council. So that's number one. The second, to the extent that there are numbers on this piece of paper, it generally reflects that this is a partial operating season and where the bulk of the revenues come from are ultimately from memberships for league play, memberships for individual golf play and to a lesser extent, the pool passes. But all of those deposits are, you know, total of significant numbers and have so in the past. And, you know, to the extent that, you know, after I look at this and either confirm or adjust, you know, what's been presented, what you're able to see is that without any of those deposits, without any of that income, that for at least the five or six months that have been shown here, you're close to, in the yellow highlighted, close to a break even. But keep in mind that we've honored numerous weddings, numerous outings, numerous gift cards that were obligated by the previous parties who did not have to incur the liability to operate those events, but we did. So we honored that. So we didn't turn people away that, you know, two days earlier showed up and said, "My wedding is in two days. Do you have everything ready?" So that is in there that contributes to, you know, some months not being as profitable or some months perhaps being in the red. But we do believe that, and we think if we get to a normal operating season where you have all the deposits and that you have a full year of golf, which basically starts in April, which would be two months missing from here, and then are able to run your own banquets and weddings and events where you're booking it and incurring and getting the revenue from it, I think it paints a completely different picture. So I'm not sure if that directly answers your question, but I was trying.
That's exactly what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Are there any other questions? I move to adopt the first reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Soretta, you opposing?
Abstaining.
Abstaining. Yes, Soretta abstains, 6-0. All right. Thank you. I may have a motion and a second to read by title only, first reading, resolution 17-19. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Member Soretta abstains. Tim?
A resolution authorizing a director of law on behalf of the city of North Canton to commence and take all legal actions necessary to recover from RNS Golf Properties Incorporated, David Scott Demucy and Robert C. Purcell, Jr., tenants. Lease payments and capital improvements due from tenants are now provided to the city under lease agreement and subsequent amendments thereto and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Thank you. Chairwoman Warren?
We did discuss this last week and if there are no questions, concerns, I move to adopt.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Member Soretta abstains. And we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Member Soretta abstains. And finally, motion and a second to adopt under suspension of the rules. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Member Soretta abstains. All right. Thank you. Reports, Deputy Director of Administration.
Well, I just want to make one comment regarding this role's questioning on the finance director and the progress of that. I want to commend council on how very seriously they took the recruiting of this position for such a critical role for the city. So it was posted and ran in the repository for two weeks. It also was posted in five different places. It was on ZipRecruiter Indeed. It was on LinkedIn. It was on the Ohio Municipal League. So it was in multiple places. And the position being such a critical role to the city, we didn't wait. Maybe in years past, we sat, we waited after we got someone's notice and maybe months after they were gone, they started moving on it. On this, they moved immediately. So as soon as we received notice that someone was terminating, voluntarily resigning employment from the city, that's when we got it posted. So it was posted November 17th and November 24th in the Canton repository and then on all of those other multiple job boards. So I just want to come So I just want to commend them in getting this position filled to the point where someone's coming up to the podium to say, "What's the status?" Yeah. And we say, "The status is, interviews are done, offer has been made, offer has been accepted, and a date has been reached." So excited.
Kathy, you were so helpful with all of that. I mean, like, right on explaining things, well, I mean, it was crazy.
The team interviews, the collaboration.
Yeah, it was great.
Appreciate it.
How we were able to get together and really good candidates we, we had and it was a really good process.
That's all.
Yeah. Thank you, Director of Administration.
No report.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I just had the opportunity to attend a few things on behalf of the city and representing them. Uh, this last Saturday on twelve fourteen, I was, uh, involved with the, uh, wreaths across America sponsored by the Canton Chapter of the DAR, Daughters of American Revolution. Uh, trustee, Plaintownship trustee Scott Haas also assisted. We were asked to be, uh, just a, a short keynote speakers, uh, for that event. And I'd say we probably had about seventy people there to put out wreaths. Again, this was an honor and remembrance and, uh, our, uh, veterans who have fallen in the line of service, whether it was, uh, in, uh, in battle or in other circumstances. But, uh, it was a great opportunity for us to share a message about remembering the fallen and to those who have served and also the, some of the young people that were there to teach them a little bit about, uh, the value of freedom. So that was, uh, we did, uh, we distributed wreaths at North Canton Cemetery and then we went over to Werschler Cemetery and with select and, selected veterans' graves placed a wreath. And this occurred throughout the United States at National, Arlington National Cemetery in the U.S., at Sea and Abrot, and this was being done on that day itself. So just had an opportunity to rep, represent our city for that. We've had two snowfalls that have affected our roads and I want to compliment our, our street department and all those employees who, uh, were out there keeping our roads, uh, salted and, uh, clear. And it's always important, especially when we had that very first snowfall, to get out in front of that. And I think our departments did that excellently, that, uh, we didn't have any negative, uh, comments about, uh, the snow even having a chance to, uh, matriculate on our city streets. That's one of our reputations, I think, is no snow flake lasts on our city streets. Another point of interest would be, uh, congratulations to the North Canton Fire Department. They had four graduates that, uh, from the Stark State College of Emergency Service. That is Jake Morton, Tyler Watson, McKenzie Kennedy, and Josh Amstutz. So they have their certifications and, uh, are working at the police department, or excuse me, the fire department. If I may, I just would like a little bit of a clarification. If I can respond to Mr. Tripp, you mentioned something about, uh, scouting mentorship and I'm just trying to understand exactly what you're, uh, uh, trying to help me understand on that.
I'm not allowed to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I, I'm corrected, thank you very much.
We have an urgent conference.
Well, I, I need to follow those rules, Larry. I'll be more than happy to discuss that afterwards. Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure there's no misunderstanding or understanding. So I withhold those remarks and I apologize for, uh, stepping out of turn on that. At any rate, I hope everybody has a good, uh, safe holiday and we'll see you, uh, in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Member of all.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple, couple items. First of all is, uh, I don't want to pass over too quickly, uh, the role that Kathy Farina played in our finance director search. I think it's a, there are instances in the city where we don't perform particularly well and I think we would all acknowledge that. But this particular situation happens to be one where, uh, the council and the administration performed as a team and did so effectively with Kathy taking the lead. I think everyone should understand that within roughly twelve hours of the resignation of our director of finance, Kathy had mapped out a plan and helped us execute it. It would have been very easy for the administration to say, waving the orange booklet, "This is the charter. We have no responsibility." But the reality is, given the fact that council's part-time, we would not have operated in a particularly effective and efficient manner.
Right.
Without Kathy's help. And again, Kathy, I want to reiterate my appreciation for the highly professional manner in which the search was or planned and executed with a result I think we're all, we're all very appreciative and, and grateful for. You know, I drove up here tonight, it's a cold winter night, and I was thinking, you know, there's not going to be much under my Christmas tree. And then Chuck has given me a gift. Chuck, I want to thank you for the work you did here, uh, on the Arrowhead finances. It's a perfect illustration of a point I've tried to make in the past. Every option for Arrowhead has a cost associated with it. The reality is, to Pat's point, we really don't know what these numbers look like given the management, or given the contract that we had with pre, predecessors. But if we looked at just Chuck's, for example, and we said, "Jeez, there's a two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-dollar loss." Yeah? But what if it was a park? Might be four or five-hundred-thousand-dollar loss. And if it was a residential neighborhood, what's that loss going to look like on an annual or a decade basis? And Chuck, I, again, I appreciate the fact that you've done this work perfectly, i- it's a great example of what I believe is our, our need as, as this period unfolds, is to make a decision based upon facts, the best facts we could get. And those include the financial, the financial costs of every option under our consideration. So Chuck, thank you for your, your work, thank you for illustrating my point. And with that, I'll conclude my report.
Well said, Darrell. Thank you. Member Fonte.
Um, I agree with what Darrell said, Kathy. We were so efficient, I, I mean, it was great. It didn't seem like government at all, did it? Uh, we had two great candidates, um, we selected Gina, we had it all strategically planned, it was very efficient. I got to interview with several of the different people. It was great. And I think we have a good candidate and I think we should be happy and it's great that she's already on the calendar. Um, I also like to say, uh, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy Hanukkah to everybody. And I hope everybody has a chance to reflect on the blessings that really we have, hopefully good health and, you know, love and, um, you know, union with our friends, family, and all the people that are less fortunate than us. So I'm just very grateful to have a nice family and a nice family up here and of course the audience and all the people listening. I just want to say, I hope everybody has a little downtime and I look forward to seeing the new year, what things will bring with our, our council and, uh, we're very focused. And I talked to a few of the constituents about, uh, trying to, uh, come up with a better way to communicate what's happening here so that it makes more sense because there's so many, so many positive things going on and it, it just kills me that it's not getting out as much as I would like to see. So I had a meeting with some of our administration, we're going to try to come up with a better way to, uh, communicate based on our audience. So that's all I have. Happy New Year, everybody.
Thank you, Dominic. Director Fox.
I, uh, could not approve, uh, improve upon, uh, member Revolt's and Fonte's comments, so I'll simply concur and yield the rest of my time.
All right. Thank you very much. Member Foltz?
No report.
Member Warren?
Just again, thank you to Kathy. Made it very easy and just appreciate everything. I just wanted to comment on, um, Mayor Wilder's comments too and thank him for going to those events and I think North Canton does just a great job supporting the military and veterans. And I was at the Army-Navy game this weekend and, um, just to see that spirit and to be able to participate in it, my daughter Grace, her company gets to run the ball from Annapolis to Philadelphia and to see kids coming out of the schools and cheering them on in the highway, uh, people beeping their horns, you just saw the spirit that is contagious. And I don't know if people noticed, but on the, um, uniforms they were wearing, um, I think it was the company number of the person who was, um, killed in Pensacola and he was a graduate just last year and had been assigned, um, the month prior. And then they do this, they call it a prisoner exchange and the kids that came from West Point for the semester and then the kids that go back to, um, Annapolis and vice versa, they switch. And Annapolis had four Pete on it because they've beaten us a lot of times, but the Navy, um, students decided to put the two bases. So they did Pensacola and Hawaii. So when you saw that on the TV, I didn't even know what it was, like, I don't know what that means, um, but it was really neat. So I just think we do a great job with that and Mark, you've always been a big part of that too with the flags and just honoring and, and all of our ceremonies, so, thank you.
Thank you. Member Stroya.
I want to kind of continue on with what, uh, what's that?
Oh, you are, yeah, uh, I, I'm sorry, uh, we still have member Keesleen on here. Sorry about that. Member Stroya.
That's not nice.
We'll work you in, man.
Oh, thank you. Um, I want to continue with what, what Darrell was saying, uh, with three local examples and to show how important the, the, the contract and the planning is for golf courses. So let's look at the sanctuary. It began planning in two thousand and one, uh, it is still selling lots from phase one development and it took six years to build its first home. So if you look at that in light of what we're considering doing potentially, that's just one example. Right, it's one year less. So then let's look at Edgewood. Maybe, you know, the sanctuary happened during an economic downturn, whatever. Edgewood did not. Edgewood, uh, was bought in two thousand and thirteen, started planning immediately. Phase one is just now starting, six years later. House has not been built yet. Even, maybe even closer to what we're looking at, Tam O'Shanter, they're going to develop the plan as sixty-two acres commercially. Uh, began planning as early as two thousand and seventeen with Stark Parks. No commercial activity has started. Meyer is considering moving into, uh, it looks like there's a contract that's been signed. Um, even with Meyer's clout and endless money, project is not anticipated to be completed till two thousand twenty-two or two thousand twenty-three. And that's only fifteen of the sixty-two acres. So that's the importance of a transition from a golf course to something else, if that's what it's going to be. So I just wanted to point that out. Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, thanks for coming.
Thank you. Member Saretta.
Uh, yes, a couple of things. I mentioned earlier in the prayer that, the, this place looked great, but the whole city looks good. I mean, I had a lot of comments recently, administration, great job with all the things around there, the parks and everything. It really looks good and when people come back, uh, they make a lot of comments about our city and everything, so all good stuff with that. Uh, I, I do want to, uh, pile on here for Kathy, great job with getting everything going with that, very impressed, uh, very professional. I thought everybody was very professional, everybody had a hand in it, everybody was there, uh, and that's what it's about. One of the things that, uh, the candidates all mentioned, that it, how refreshing it is to work with a team, not just council, but administrative council that was working as a team. And, you know, you don't see that in a lot of different communities and the couple of people that we talked to, you could, right out, you could see that there was a difference there, so I give everybody, commend everybody and, uh, you know, kudos to ourselves on that. I hope we will continue that too. Uh, outside of that, uh, Happy Holiday, everyone.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, moving on, uh, for the, for the rest, the remainder of the year calendar, uh, we will be on winter recess, we will be returning January thirteenth for a regular council meeting. There'll be no meeting January, the week of January twentieth, uh, Martin Luther King Junior Day, and coming back January twenty-seventh for a council meeting. However, we do need to add a special committee meeting on January thirteenth, following the council meeting. Uh, we have one item that's going to be coming from, uh, Admin, uh, Engineer Graham, uh, so, um, and, and also we're going to start the regular council meeting an hour early at six P.M. So I need, uh, a voice vote, um, for six P.M. start for council meeting with special committee meeting to follow.
I move.
What date was that, Jeff? That is January thirteenth.
Okay, we're back. I move that the council meeting's time be advanced to six P.M. on January thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries?
And I'd also like to make a motion for a special council meeting, special committee meeting to consider an engineering matter following that, that council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And Ben, uh, to our, our interim council clerk, uh, please make a note, uh, would like to do a formal, uh, that would be, uh, uh, Ms. Alabac's first meeting here. Uh, I'd like to make a, uh, formal council appointment at that point, at that time. Okay, uh, final call for new business, council? All right, seeing none, uh, this time, I need a motion and a second to, uh, enter into executive session. This is for, uh, to confer with the law director concerning disputes involving the city that are the subject of imminent court action. The executive session will not be open to the public.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Uh, no, we need a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. You are, you are correct. Ben, can you call the roll on that one? Thanks, Darrell. Revolt?
Yes.
Fonte?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Foltz?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Stroya?
Yes.
Saretta?
Yes. Abstain.
Abstain, since I don't know what it's about, yeah, all right. Everybody clues me in, everybody writes, everybody calls. Six in favor, one abstain, we are in executive session. I don't know.